We're just getting our technicalities set up before we start. All right, we are ready to go. Welcome, everybody. It is just after 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 15, 2022. You are at Wausau City Hall for the Common Council of the City of Wausau. Welcome. I'm calling this to order. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up, roll call.
We have 11 voting members present.
All right, welcome, everyone. All right, next up is Proclamations. Looks like we got them all done last week. So we will go right into our presentation from the Wausau CBB, requesting support for Marathon County ARPA grants.
Tim White, 225721 Swan Avenue, Executive Director for the Wausau Central Wisconsin Convention and Visitors Bureau, aka Visit Wausau. Good evening, Council, Mayor, staff, storied guests. It's, uh, it's great to be before you and to, uh, one year in as the new Executive Director to just kind of celebrate a number of things and then ask a pretty easy request. This, uh, this, this, this presentation thing that I gave you is something that we passed out, uh, this past May at our Tourism Luncheon, which next year we'll do again, and I would love to have you all there. One, it's a free meal, and secondly, it's just very informative about how tourism and visitor, uh, the economy builds up our, our great area. Some of the things inside that I just want to highlight, all the future-focused things that are, that are inside of this presentation are well on their way, either completed or they're finishing up right now, except for the new Visitor Center. Pretty excited to have gone through all of these focuses and goals. We're, you can even see last year's financials on there. You can always see our financials. We're totally transparent. And yeah, I'm excited to, uh, to really be the destination marketing organization for the entire county. So if you do have any questions about that, feel free to, uh, to ask me if you'd like my business card and you want to sit down for coffee individually or together with a group of council people. I'm more than willing to do that. But tonight, I'm here to ask for your support as a municipality. The, the letter that's in your packet, the second, the, the first letter that's right after the, um, agenda, you'll see, uh, requesting a letter of support from the municipality of Wausau to, um, the county, Marathon County, in support of a grant that we applied for from Marathon County, supplied through ARPA funds. We asked for a grant of $600,000. As some of you may know, we own a parcel of land in Rib Mountain, right off of County Road NN, aka the old Shakey's Building, if you've been around enough. If you'd like a tour of that, I, I'll take you in and you can relive old memories, but it's probably more of a nightmare. The, the building is uninhabitable, and so what we've done is, um, we've applied for this grant and, uh, we have mocked up through function design, a very basic Visitor Center. We'll have space for displays and to highlight the entire county, as well as offices, a conference room for anybody in the community to use. I'll pass these specs around so you can see what it looks like from the plans to, uh, the vision. And it's nothing set in stone, but this just gives you an idea of, uh, what we're doing. We, we want to just have a small space, about 2,200 square feet, and we would tear down, um, that current building, which has molded asbestos and just is really not, um, it's not worth the, the effort to, uh, to fix it. So, um, basically, all, all we would like from you is a letter of support that we'll present to the county, saying, hey, we're for this. We're for the Visitor Center. We recognize that, um, it's a benefit for our community, and that's it. So, I sure appreciate your support this past year and look forward to continuing our great relationship.
Are there any questions from this body?
Yes.
Alder Reston?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I'll say just what, what a difference a couple years makes. Um, now that we, um, kind of have reinvented the organization and we've got, you know, Tim on board and, you know, we're able to see these financials, which a couple of years ago, we would never have seen, um, and recognize that things there are changing, um, both in the way they market our community, um, and in the way they are, um, really, really good at communicating back to us and to the other municipalities that are participating. So, um, I think that, uh, new Visitor Center would be a plus, and hopefully, we will, um, all be in favor of signing onto that letter to see if Marathon County can help you out with that. So, excited to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, another thing I forgot to add, too, is, uh, as per your investment of releasing those funds, uh, earlier in the year, uh, our new Director of Marketing will start this Thursday. She is, uh, a person that's been in the area locally, but she's also got amazing outdoor rec and sports, uh, marketing background out west. So, with skiing and, um, yeah, she also worked at Foot Locker. So, her name is, uh, Alyssa Stein-Hilber. So, she's got, she's a great addition to our staff.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions from this body? Otherwise, thank you. We'll figure out where that request needs to go. Thank you.
Thanks. And you can keep these, by the way.
Perfect. All righty. Uh, next up, we have public comment. Um, so I will just launch into it. If you're here to speak on the budget, that public hearing is just a teeny bit later, uh, but right now, it looks like everybody is here to not talk about the budget, but to talk about John Marshall. So, first up, Bob Tess.
Thank you, Council. Our stomachs are all full right now just by hearing Mr. White mention Shakey's. So, that buffet treated me pretty well back in the day. So...
Missed some mojos.
My name is Bob Tess. I live at 3201 O.CAV Stevens Point, uh, as the CFO of the Wausau School District. Tonight, I represent the school board and, in particular, the financial interest of the entire district. As John Marshall Elementary is owned by the district, this ownership group is made up of 1% Town of Hewitt, 2% Town of Berlin, 3% Town of Texas, 3% Town of Wausau, 6% Village of Maine, 6% the town of Stettin, 21% the town of Rib Mountain, and 58% the city of Wausau. The ownership's board would like the council to know that they would like the flexibility to determine the future of John Marshall's school with help from their entire community through a process that is currently developing and will take a big step forward tomorrow night. I invite everybody within earshot to join us tomorrow night at 5 o'clock at the Wausau West Auditorium for a community event to discuss the restructuring possibilities for the Wausau School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up, I have Scott Seifelt.
Scott Seifelt, 2007 Garth Street. I am here to advocate for the preservation of John Marshall as an historic neighborhood school and to ask you to grant the building local historic landmark designation. This is entirely consistent with, uh, past city designations and has been approved by the committees and commissions charged by municipal code with making such recommendations. City Code states, "It is a matter of public policy that the protection and use of buildings of special architectural or historical value is a public necessity and is required in the welfare of the people." This includes buildings that represent the city's, quote, "social history" that promote the use of historic landmarks for the education of the people. John Marshall checks every box. The school board has a tough job, one I do not envy. They have to make more with less, and they have since objected to landmarking in order to have total control over whether to make improvements to John Marshall, to close it down or to tear it down as part of their restructuring plan. But local historic landmark designation does not by itself prevent the district from doing what it wants with the property, including tearing it down. If anything, it creates a couple more steps in the process to better ensure that the cultural, his cultural, historical, and social values of the city are being respected. One parent recently described John Marshall as "the beating heart of our neighborhood." Some families are on their fourth generation of students currently being educated there. This contributes to a special sense of deep community on the southeast side, in which the children of today and tomorrow are blessed to grow up and to inherit, and that once taken away from them is replaced with nothing. The building is special to us. Each addition represents the aspirations of succeeding generations. What does it say about our generation? That we are actively discussing shutting or tearing it all down? And for what? A new building that will not be so grand, last so long, or mean anything to us? John Marshall represents the best of public education in the state of Wisconsin, as does the current principal and the teachers and the staff and all of their predecessors. This building and what occurs therein is the jewel in the modest crown of Wausau's southeast side. It is not a thing to be closed. It is not a thing to be torn down. It is a thing to be honored and built upon and improved and landmarked. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And last, I have Mary.
Well, that is a hard act to follow, but I'll try. Um, my husband and I moved here in 1970, which means we're not as old as John Marshall, which is going to celebrate its 100th anniversary in April. But we did move to Wausau, and we did move to the southeast side for a very specific reason. We raised our four children there. We loved the concept of a school being the center of all the activity of the neighborhood. We loved the fact that there were different sizes of homes, some small, some modern, some maybe more extravagant ones at that time, but we liked the mix of people and the fact that this school was such a beautiful school. So, I think those who are talking about, and we really don't know what the school board is planning, and I attended the school board meeting last night, and I know they have a lot of issues, but we do know that this is a historical school. I feel that those who say you could tear it down, you could build a new one, there is a sense of place that's important, I think, to families and to people. And I want to celebrate that school, celebrate John Marshall neighborhood. It's a community of people who really love this city, and my husband and I are two of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's all I have signed up for public comment. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have our consent agenda. That's file number 221001 through file number 860818. Uh, it looks like I have a motion from Alder Watson and a second from Alder Larson. Any discussion?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up, appointments. It's file number 221103. Uh, we are appointing Jesse Kearns to replace John Schrader for the Sustainability, Energy, and Environment Committee. It looks like I have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Watson. Any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we are here to our public hearing on our, uh, proposed 2023 City of Wausau budget. It's file number 221109. Yes. I, I put together a little kind of mini, we're gonna have to log in 500 more times, a little mini presentation, um, just to kind of, um, kind of go over the kinds of things that I'm looking at when I look at a budget, and I think maybe it'll be helpful to people here and people watching at home possibly. Um, I promise I'm not gonna take more than five minutes to just go through this, uh, little thing here. So, uh, there we are. That's us. Um, and I just started us off with this quote from the former U.S. Secretary of the Treasury, Jacob Lu, because I thought it was a good quote to kind of center us. "The budget is not just a collection of numbers, uh, but it's an expression of our values and aspirations." I think we all have agreed on that over the last few years, too. Um, and again, I just kind of expounded on this. If, you know, if you want to read this, it will be in our minutes. Um, but I wanted to say, we put a lot of effort into putting this together, um, listening to folks, uh, who showed up at our budget meetings, who came to maybe our neighborhood meetings. I heard from a lot of you who had meetings. Uh, so we tried to put some of that stuff in there, too. Um, but we do have challenges, obviously levy limits, um, and expenditure restraint incentives, um, but we can get into that in a second. So, one of the things that I think is complicating, uh, discussion of budget in public are these terms that we use. They're a little bit different than what we would use at home, so I tried to define some of these. So levy, um, that's the total amount of funds, uh, that we can collect for our tax rate. Right? That seems pretty easy, uh, but we are, uh, limited. Thank you, Representative Snyder, for sitting in the audience and listening to us as we talk about our budget. Um, but we are limited by the state legislature. Um, we have levy limits. Um, so that's something that you're probably gonna hear a lot more about next year. I think you probably already are hearing about it. Um, expenditure restraint isn't really something we talk a lot about, but I think it's really important to our discussion. We have a finance director who has a lot of experience in this, and, you know, we aren't just going to get to the levy limit. Here in Wausau, we are trying not to grow that budget as well, because we end up getting extra money from the state if we don't grow our budget, and that's in the form of an expenditure restraint grant. So, we want that. We like that. We try to get to that point, um, even more so than levy limits. And then shared revenue, obviously, uh, we all collect, municipalities, county, school district, we collect taxes, um, and we share that between us all. Uh, so there are those definitions. Net new construction, um, that really is kind of what helps us, um, decide how we can increase any kind of spending that we have. It's based off of net new construction. So, it's the local assessed value, um, and then it's a little bit of a math problem, minusing, you know, the assessed value of that, that demolitions, things like that. Equalized value, uh, if you serve on the county board or pay attention to county board, you hear probably a lot more about equalized value, because they have a lot of little municipalities and cities kind of making up, um, their different, you know, tax rates, um, but they kind of equalize it out. Mill rate and tax rate, pretty much the same thing, uh, for our purposes here. So, you know, it's, uh, $1 of tax for each, uh, $1,000 of your assessed value on your home or business. All right, so budget process, uh, it didn't start last week. It didn't start last month. We started talking about this, I mean, we're gonna be talking about this for the rest of our lives, I feel like, but really, in earnest, May and June, we had budget kickoff meetings with department directors. In July, uh, if you are blessed to be on our CIP committee, our Capital Improvement Projects Committee, uh, we started meeting then, uh, where folks ranked and decided what was most important. Um, August and September, uh, we all duked it out, uh, departments and finance director and me, uh, trying to figure out how do we get these numbers to fit just right. And then in October, you all got to start duking it out, um, to decide what you wanted to keep, what you wanted to throw away. Um, and obviously, all, you had several, several meetings in October, um, talking about this budget, and here we are, uh, budget, public hearing. Uh, that's where we are here. Uh, we expect that next week, if we have a budget that we can agree on, uh, we will vote on it and we'll pass it, and then in January, we will start spending that money. Um, so the big investments that we are making in this year's budget, there's a lot of stuff. Obviously, you've been through all of those documents, but big stuff, drinking water treatment facility, um, housing, economic development, I spent a lot of time figuring out that housing situation, employee recruiting and retention, that kind of came to the top of everybody's mind here, making sure that we are keeping great employees and also hiring great employees, and then economic stabilization, um, making sure that we are supporting our local, uh, businesses. Um, other funding sources, obviously lots of stuff happening with the federal government, um, with the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, we were allocated 15.6 million. Uh, we have the bipartisan infrastructure law. Um, we weren't directly allocated that funding. A lot of it comes to the state, but it's a lot of projects that we care about through roads, um, kind of green investments, things like that. We also take on debt. We borrow for things, um, so that's part of the considerations here. And then grants and awards, those are the things we love, because it's basically free money. We will take everything that we apply for, um, and can get. So, the cost to continue is a number I like to pay attention to. Um, so everything that we did this year, if we were just to not do anything new and just do exactly what we did this year, um, it would cost 1.3 million more dollars to do that next year than it did this year. So, I mean, we can see that with inflation, all of that. Um, overall budget, uh, this is also a number I'm interested in. Um, total budget is 129 million, uh, for 2023. It's a lot. It's a lot of money, um, and we can do a lot of things, um, but we obviously can't do everything that we want to do. Uh, so that's where all of your choices, um, and putting this budget together come, to come into play. Uh, so these are kind of the biggest challenges, too, as we continue on with our budget, recruiting and retention. I, I can't say it, I can't say it enough. It's really important that we're paying our people, uh, what we can, um, the most that we can, because we value their work. Um, most of our budget goes to people, um, necessarily, so we are a service, basically, industry here. Aging facilities, you, uh, be, even before I was elected here, I heard about our aging facilities, um, particularly Public Works Garage and some other places. Continue, uh, we need to maintain that. But, you know, there are some other places, like our Public Safety Building, where the HVAC system is a little wonky and kind of annoying. So, if you sit there all day sometime in the summer, um, you will be hot, you will be cold, it will be weird. Um, and obviously, inflation and supply chain, that's kind of been challenging for our growth. Um, you know, in 2021, we had 4.7% inflation, and here we are, uh, in '22 at 8.8. That's a big difference. Um, luckily, we're not in Turkey, where it's like 80%, um, but here we are. We still have to deal with some of that stuff. Um, and then these are the biggest investments, uh, public safety, between both the fire department and the police department, uh, we're looking at $21.7 million for operations. Um, that's a big chunk. Public Works, another big chunk of operations. Motor pool, all of vehicles, things like that, and then transit, um, we have 4.3 here. Um, water treatment, I wanted to make sure to put this in here, but I want to also make sure that it's clear that we're not doing, it's not all budgeted for this year. This is over time. Um, so we have our drinking water treatment facility. We have, um, the granular activated carbon system we're looking at, and then we have, uh, the sewer project, too, at 89, um, million. So, this is all coming in between borrowing, forgivable loans, grants. We're, you know, knocking on our senator's door to try and get money. You know, we're trying to do everything we can here, um, but that's over time. Um, we'll be looking at, uh, making sure we pay for all of that. Uh, this is just a pretty easy breakdown, um, so you kind of get the operations. That's what we do. Snowplow drivers, uh, customer service, inspections, um, everything we, fire, police, all of it. Um, and then capital is 15.9%. So, that was my little brief, um, budget thing. I think my last slide just says, "Thank you." So, yeah, yay, thank you. So, that's what I have. I don't know if you would like to give anything, uh, Mary Ann, Finance Director. Um, I know you've been working crazy hours. You're good. Okay. Uh, cool. All right, so now it's the public's turn. If there's anybody here, uh, public hearing is now open. We'd love to hear your thoughts on our 2023 budget. So, you can feel free to approach the podium and, uh, take your three minutes if that's what you're into. I will be calling for this three times, so if you're shy right now, you have two more times. All right, public hearing is open for the 2023 budget. All right. Uh, last time, uh, public hearing for our 2023 budget. We would love to hear from anybody that has things to say. If you're too shy to approach the podium now, I'd encourage you maybe to reach out to your Alder or me. Uh, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, thank you for sitting in the audience and enjoying our meeting tonight, um, but we didn't hear from anybody, so thank you, uh, for taking the opportunity. Um, I don't think the, the council necessarily gets to talk about this right now, though. It's, it's, so we're closed, uh, so then I'm just, next week is your time, then? Tuesday. All right. Thank you, everyone. That was very different than last week's county budget hearing. Goes without saying. Okay. All right, we are moving on, then. Uh, we are on to item number 221,006. This is a joint ordinance from the Historic Preservation Committee and the Plan Commission. Uh, it is amending section 2.82.055 of the Wausau Municipal Code to, um, include the designation of the John Marshall School at 1918 Lamont Street as a local historical landmark. Looks like I have a motion by Alder Gisselman and a second by Alder Denny. Um, Alder Denny, it looks like you also have a request to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, didn't get a chance to speak at the last, uh, council meeting due to the parliamentary procedure, so when we table- so when we tabled this, I didn't get a chance, so I'm going to try to pipe in my two cents early here, tonight. I heard something tonight, I hadn't, didn't know that the city is only 58% of the Wausau School District. I think that is interesting for my, I guess, governing, for my principle, for making this decision, is whose governing jurisdiction is this? And I'm afraid that we're setting up a situation where we have two governing bodies pitted against each other, and I think, had this come to us in a five to four in favor, I don't think we'd be discussing it at all, we'd have approved it months ago, and the four guys who, or four that would have dissented wouldn't have gotten much of the time of day. So they wouldn't more likely persuade us otherwise, but that wasn't the case. They voted unanimously to ask us to not landmark this, this school. So I think that's my overriding principle for maintaining their jurisdiction here. But at, one of the, I guess, one of the things that Gary had mentioned at the last meeting is that we did give the school board a chance to respond, and they didn't, didn't meet some deadline, and I don't know if that was a hard deadline or not, but when they did, they did come in with their homework late, I guess you could say, but they did respond it, and they responded unanimously against it. So when it, if it, when it comes to these decisions, whether it's on use or consolidation, you know, as a parent and a resident and a taxpayer, we should appeal to the school district to do what citizens desire and users desire. My personal appeal would be that your planning decision should take into consideration the historic significance of the school, but it's still within your decision-making process, but it's your decision to make, in my opinion. So I won't be supporting passing this through designation of historic, and I guess I did, for the people who did contact me, several were for, several were against, on the grounds of the school is more than a brick and mortar. And I think most would agree that they'd want to keep the school before they lose the building to another purpose. But again, that's an appeal for the school district, not the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I think, I'm glad that we took some extra time to engage with this and allow some conversations to happen within the community, both within the neighborhood and the school and the Plan Commission. I don't think that we had sufficient feedback to make a decision the last time we considered this. I will say that part of the factor that weighs in here for us is the juxtaposition of the knowledge that neighborhood schools matter. Neighborhood schools matter to neighborhoods. People choose their homes based on the proximity of the school they want to send their children to. And so, you know, when I think this through, there's no guarantee that historic designation of this building will save the building or save the school. You know, they can still close it, they can bulldoze it, they can sell it, whatever they're going to do, they can do. And, you know, back when we landmarked grant, we intentionally landmarked grant to get in front of a process that was moving way too far, way too fast, and it was, it had dismal public engagement, it had terrible communications to the affected families and the students, and the only way we could get in front of that process to slow down the steaming train was to use that tool. That isn't the case here. There's no final plan yet for this building. Obviously, hearing the things that we heard come out of the board this week, I will say I'm glad I don't have a kid in public school anymore, because I'll say again, neighborhood schools matter to neighborhoods. And the idea that, you know, whether we use this tool or any other tool, the idea that, I don't know how many times the public has to say no to something before people keep, quit bringing up the idea, and somewhere along the line, we think to save operational dollars, that creating a half a dozen mega elementary schools is better than having 11 neighborhood schools where kids can walk and bike to school. And so we have to not get confused with this designation, that by doing it, we're saving a school for a neighborhood, because that's a noble cause and we won't get there. And so the other thing is that, given the additional steps in the process that it would create for the district to landmark the building, to do anything with the building, you know, does that then conversely force their hand to intentionally get rid of this school in this neighborhood? And do these kids then, you know, out of, you know, budget concerns, spite, or board judgment, decide that they're all going to have to take their backpacks to Hawthorne? And be combined with some school in a neighborhood that they don't live in, and find themselves on a bus to get where they need to go? And, you know, I think the path that we see this board over there taking is that this is less about families, neighborhoods, and kids, and it's more about money and control. And that disappoints me, but I don't think there's anything we're going to do to fix that. That only gets fixed through elections. So, you know, I struggle with making this decision. I would like to hear from the alder from District One, who's had a lot of public engagement, both with the school district and with her residents. She's forwarded us a couple of emails today that she's received from people, and we specifically had tasked her with creating some outreach and getting some feedback during the month that's elapsed while we were not considering this item. So, Harold, if you'd just offer us just a summary of what you're hearing in your area, it would, might be helpful for us. Thank you.
Alder Lukens, we're ready for you.
Thank you. Sorry. Nope, I should have waited. I have talked with many, many, many people in the past month. I've attended the Historic Preservation Commission presentation, and thank you again, members. So I can say that every single resident I have spoken with, and that has been people from generations in the neighborhood, to people who, young families who moved in the neighborhood because of the school. They all want a neighborhood school. They all want John Marshall to remain in the neighborhood. And this is a very hard position for me. This is very difficult, but, okay, this is what, you know, I signed on for when I ran for public office. I'm just going to be very transparent. The only reasons that anyone I've talked with have been against it is because they're afraid that the, the board, the school board, will use that to close John Marshall. And I think that's really sad, that people are in fear, families are in fear. And families have told me, if that happens, we're moving. Like, we moved here for this school. So I, I've really struggled with what, you know, what to do, but the resounding, schools are important for the neighborhood, you know, a neighborhood school is important, that is resounding. And so I, and many, I mean, many more than not have said, yes, yes, we want it landmarked, it should be landmarked. It has a history, we care about the inside, we care, we care about the children, the children should be the focal point of this. And that, yes, mega schools are not the answer. And so, anyway, I would very much agree with, what I've heard has been in line with what Alder Rasmussen has said. So it's, it is a hard position for me, because I, you know, if I'm going to vote in, in line with what more, what I've heard from more, it will be for the landmarking. And if that would cause, but it, it won't, it doesn't completely, it doesn't preclude the district from still doing something with the school, that's the thing. So I think that background is important, and I just really, really hate to see, especially from all we've been through in the past number of years with COVID and everything else, it, it's really hard to listen to residents, to young families, and hear them say they're afraid that the board, the school board, will use that to close the school. So that's it in a nutshell, that's what I've heard overwhelmingly.
Thank you. Alder Gisselman.
Thank you, thank you very much. While the Historic Preservation Commission, you know, we've been talking about this for a good part of this year, must, you know, since the Plan Commission voted unanimously, it came to the city council last month, the Historic Preservation Commission did engage the community. We went through the ordinance. Brad Lenz, the city planner, described the, what can happen after, for instance, if it is, if it is landmarked, what the procedure is, what, what the process is that follows. So we're here this evening, the city council in your packet, and through the community has certainly real, come to see the, the value of this John Marshall School in the neighborhood. It is an historic landmark. The Preservation Commission is bringing you this, this evening, to, to pass that as a landmark. We, we see it as 100 years old, in your packet, you'll see the evidence of, of that, of why the Preservation Commission is, is, is presenting this to the city council. What happens with the school board, that's another decision that the school board is going to have to make. But we're presenting this to the city council, because we really feel this is, and the Plan Commission agrees, this is a very, an important landmark, an important part of our history. It sits on the southeast side, in the middle of that neighborhood. It has been that, an anchor for that neighborhood for 100 years. The neighborhood grew up around it, in fact. So if you have come into that neighborhood, you have grown, you have grown with, with the history of that, with that school. So I, if, I hope that you had a chance to see the YouTube on the Historic Preservation engagement with the community. I think that, I think some people came, from the community came out, we heard from the community, we are here now presenting this John Marshall as, as a landmark for the city of Wausau. So I thank you for your time, and I encourage you to vote for it as a landmark in the city of Wausau. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to recognize that we have Brad Lenz here, if there are any questions about this process or what it means. You, you have fully staffed folks here who can answer all your questions. Alder Martins.
Thank you. And I think I'm going to echo a lot of the passion that's been spoken by Alders Gisselman, Lukens, and Rasmussen, because they are absolutely correct, John Marshall is sort of the nexus or focal point of the community. It's the focal point today, it's the focal point, it was the focal point 100 years ago when, when the neighborhood was built. Oak Claire Heights was the first planned community in the, in the city of Wausau, built around the school, or just adjacent to the school. Many of the other structures in the community echo the same architectural features that you'll find in the neighborhood. And these, these historic buildings that are part of the southeast side of Wausau, I think that's, they need to, they need to stay together, stay cohesive, because it's part of a bigger sort of, you know, bit of a planned community, but also a bit of our, our history as a city. You know, the school board is absolutely correct, you know, the school is more than a building, but also I think that's a bit of a false argument, too, because the building, the building itself, there's, there's so much pride in, in what happens in and around John Marshall School. I remember years and years ago, when I was working with the Boy Scouts, going into the, into the, into the public schools, and talking with, with the parents and the families and the kids that, that went there, and you could tell the amount of pride there that happened in those, in that, in that school, you know, families, children walked to school, you know, families met there for PTA and other, and other activities, you know, we had the Cub Scouts there. And it was, it was, it was that nexus in the community, and it was just, just, just a totally amazing thing. Landmarking really doesn't prevent the school district from moving forward with their restructuring plans, that's, that's absolutely true. The district can do whatever they want, you know, they can continue with the building, they can decide they want to, they want to change the building, they want to, they want to abandon the building. From, from that point, what landmarking does is it just puts those extra steps, those extra checks, so that if that is the will of the school district, they're going to have, they're going to have to show, this is the reason why this has to be done. And landmarking gives our, gives this 100-year-old school that extra level of protection that evidently it, it so desperately needs now, in the face of, in the face moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you. I realized that I did not answer the part of the question that Alder Rasmussen asked about being in contact, too, with the, the school district. I have been, and with the school board, and I very much appreciated the information, and I do not also envy the school board, the task that they have ahead of them. So, you know, I want, I want to share that, because I really don't envy them that, but, so what, what I was told in the last day, one of the board members responded, who had been on the committee, the elementary committees this summer, and said that, you know, that they talked about the possibility of keeping John Marshall as is, closing it, moving the students to another school, but no decisions have been made, and that the, the referendum in last April was for safety and security updates to the, like, the office area, the main entrance of John Marshall, and also some parking, the parking lot, but anyway. So I asked about other updates, and, you know, they, anyway, the short of it is that they would likely need to go to referendum to do more, and that would likely, you know, I just asked them for estimates, so they're guessing, this isn't anything, I don't want anyone to take this as something the district said or said in stone, but that it would probably be a couple of years at least, anyway. So, you know, but the fact, again, just being that, no one really knows. So I wanted to say that, and I think there was something else, and now I can't remember. But again, I just, yeah, I agree with, as far as all of the work that I did with the landmarking is, it does not prevent the district from doing something else with it, doing improvements to it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, and I guess what I hear us talking about in different ways is that, you know, we feel that first, adding these extra steps to the process perhaps slows down a process that would require deliberative discussion if the building were to disappear or cease to be a school. I guess what I struggle with is, you know, because I put nothing past the, just given the actions that I've seen from this new board already, I put nothing past them. And I will say that if our decision causes a school, based on its restrictive nature, causes a school to be taken from its neighborhood, I think that's a fail as well. And, you know, I think that is, you know, we've received a lot of public feedback saying, yes, landmark it, but, you know, does it tie their hands with what they can do for the building? No, not really. But, you know, if that decision goes forward, what happens next? I mean, does it become, you know, a punitive action to start to combine these schools and get rid of the building that's going to cost people 7 million? If they go back to referendum after the gigantic referendum they just got, chances are the referendum, the result from the taxpayers probably going to be no. School referendums fail in every election cycle. I mean, they're, I do feel that the referendum they just asked us to pass, that originally, when it was put out there, contained massive projects at each of the buildings, and it really would have preserved the structure of the district the way it was, and made the things better that needed to be made better. But out of fear that that wouldn't pass, they had to whittle down that proposal, and what did they do? They gutted all of the They gutted all of the work at the elementary schools on purpose, so they could start this conversation again, which has been a non-starter at, at least four or five different points that I've been involved with the school district, and that's been an awfully long time, both as an alumni and as a parent of a recent graduate. So, you know, I just, I, I think we really need to think about the effect of the decision, but it's gonna be a struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to address a few comments of my colleagues. I'll start with the gentlelady from District 7 stated, you know, that there could be, it sounded like, policy retribution for this, should the city move ahead from, from the school board. And I would say that we should not be making policy decisions based on such stated or unstated threats or punitive action. We do and should do what's in the best interest of the city and the people and community within the city. And on that note, as we know, within this chamber, could the school board take such action? Does it have the authority? Maybe it does, but I'll tell you, there's sure a distinction between that authority and the ability to make such a punitive decision, and in the long term, what the community and residents will tolerate. So, I think that we should remember that this is still Wausau, and neighborhood schools do matter. The desire for single-family homes in those neighborhoods still matter, and we are hearing complaints about high-density development on the residential front, and I think we are hearing concerns about high-density school development. So, I think we need to preserve these facilities and our history. And I would agree with Alder Martins that some of the arguments we've heard from school district leadership, that facilities don't matter, and it's all about relationships and so forth. Well, relationships are important. The citizens of this community didn't just approve over $100 million for intangibles. So, the point is, these structures and facilities do matter, and for school district leadership to suggest otherwise would be inconsistent with their positions when they came to this community to solicit over $100 million. And I think we should not lose grasp of how important our, our history is to our present and to our future. And I can speak for District 3 by saying, we've already destroyed enough of Wausau. We've destroyed enough of neighborhoods. We've destroyed enough of its architecture and, and past structures. So, I'm strongly in, in favor of landmarking the school tonight, and, and I hope that in terms of whatever future decisions the school district and board may make, that it does so with the priority of, of the people's good in mind, and, and not petty retribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Denny.
Thank you. And I guess I'm forced to respond to a couple of things I heard as well, and I, I, I have a hard time assigning sinister motivation to a school district like this. I heard the term mega schools being used. I hadn't heard that come from the school district, and maybe I missed it. But, again, the appeal is to the school district. Elections, as you discussed, as Alder Rasmussen discussed, certainly, maybe we should, you should run for school board. I, I'm not interested in running for school board, nor running that school district. So, based on that principle, I'm abstaining, or I'm, I'm not supporting this as a forced mechanism to put some sort of a decision on them that they don't want to make. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm gonna take this opportunity, but first, I would love it, Brad, I'm sorry, but would, I would just like to ask a couple of questions, so that the public, and I understand exactly what happens when we landmark it, and I also want to know, what kind of roadblocks does that throw up for, you know, a building owner, or if they want to do something? I just want to be clear.
Thank you. Well, as been, has been stated, it's not a, completely, it doesn't shut them down. There's ways to, for the property owner to make a, a case to the Historic Preservation Commission to do what they would like to do. The commission can, in fact, grant them permission to do that, but it's, as has been said, it's just another step in the review process that we would have, that we don't have right now.
Okay. Thank you. That's good. Alder McElhany.
Didn't see it up there. Thank you. I, I think that I'm looking at this as landmarking a historic landmark. I'm not looking at what it does for the school or without the school district. This, as Alder Gisselman has said, this is a historic building. It is in a historic place in our city, and that is why I will be supporting this, because that is what they're asking. I'm not trying to get around the school board or whatever, but we are, we are tasked with doing things like this. We have committees, like the Historic Commission and committees, to bring things to us with their reasoning and why they want to do it. It has been, I have gotten a lot of feedback, and it all has been to landmark this. What their reasons are is not in my business. They have said they would like this building landmarked. If they feel it's for something outside of the historic preservation of this building, that is their decision, or that is their thing. I will be supporting this, because that is what I do, is I will support what the people want, and I, it makes sense to me that this is a 100-year-old building. I will tell you, how many times have we heard through our community, through the years, that I wish they wouldn't, the city wouldn't have, or even though the city, but wish the city wouldn't have taken that old building down? I wish the city wouldn't have taken that old building down. You know, it would have such character. Why did that, we could lose that, or why do we? I don't want that to happen anymore. And we hear, I hear it a lot. Well, we only would have, you know, repaired and kept that. It, it was such the character of Wausau. So, I see this as the historic landmark of this building, and that is why I'm voting for it, no other reason. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Alder Lukens would like to speak. If there's no opposition, I'm gonna, yeah. But it looks like nobody's opposing you speaking again for a third time, so, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm still learning this. So, I'm wondering if I could just also ask one question of, is that okay?
Absolutely.
So, if, okay, if it were landmarked, and if, say, the district did want to, did decide, okay, they want to build a new school, are residents able to have, like, say, residents agreed very much, like, yes, yes, we need this, are they able to have any, to contact, you know, the, the commission at that time regarding that, to show any support or not? The administrative reviewer, or the commission? I was just kind of curious about that process.
Yes, and, no, I guess it is a public meeting. Our plant, or, excuse me, our Historic Preservation Commission does come together. It's a public meeting, the agenda's posted. We do try to do that very quickly, as, you know, so we give the, the answer to the, the property owners, but I guess the short answer is yes, it is a public meeting. It, it can be shared, you know, with your district, or with whoever it's, anyone can come, so.
Okay. Did you just go through that with the landmark hotel, when they wanted to tear down what was formerly known as Crown Bookstore? I've heard a lot about that recently, so.
Yeah, that, that was actually an example, that was in a historic district. It wasn't a landmark, but it's a similar, it's a very similar process. And in that case, the commission did actually grant permission to tear the building down. So, again, that sort of thing could happen. In this case, it's just another mechanism to say, hey, please tell us, you know, why you can't preserve this building, or what your plans are, and the commission could, in fact, say, okay, you convinced us, and.
Sure. So there's an example of, okay. Thank you. Do you have another question?
I just wanted to say along with that, then, thank you. The Wausau-Downton Airport is landmarked at the state level, too. So, along with the southeast side being the first suburb in the city of Wausau, and having the, you know, Eau Claire Heights Historic District, and the airport I did, that's one other thing that I checked into in the last month, because I'd heard that, and it's at the state level, so that is landmarked, too. So, just wanted to add that, and I promise no more, no more questions.
That's, you can ask as many questions as you want, that is allowed under Robert's rules. All right. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was not going, pardon me, I was not going to support this at first, because I, I thank all my colleagues for speaking up tonight, because I feel that, you know, if, if we go ahead and, and designate all of our schools as historic landmarks, how are we moving our, our, our community forward? And how are we presenting our, our children with the, with the best up-to-date facilities and, and, and tools that are needed to learn in today's, in today's environment? That being said, I guess, in, in listening to everybody, there's, there's nothing, nothing really in stone as what's gonna happen to this building. I mean, they could go up and, and say, okay, we're just gonna put this up for sale, if you want it saved, we'll put it up for sale, and, and make apartments out of it, like they did with, with Wausau East, you know, and, and build another school, anyway. So, that being said, I, I'm, I'm going to change my vote, and I am going to support this, because, as other people said, I, I don't like to see pieces of history torn down, as, as much as I like to see education stuff, you know, I, I don't like to see our educational facilities and staff fall behind the surrounding communities, such as DC Everest, and such as that. But I'm gonna support this, and then I'll leave it up to the school board, what they want to do with their building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything they'd like to say? Okay, well, then I'm gonna go ahead and become biased in this, but right before we vote. You know, I grew up in this neighborhood. In December of 1984, my parents moved half a block away from John Marshall School. I didn't attend the school, but most of my friends did, but I spent a lot of summers there, the summer program. Sometimes I have dreams or nightmares of being in that building. It, it is a part of our neighborhood, and Scott, when you were talking about it, you really brought the character of our whole neighborhood to your comments. I've heard from so many people, I cannot go for a walk in my neighborhood without hearing, what's gonna happen with John Marshall? What are you gonna do? How are we gonna keep that school here? We need it. And that's, that is exactly why people move to the southeast side, so that they can grow their families there. And I know that we know, as a city, that our best community development efforts are started with students at school. We need good schools. We need neighborhoods that keep, the strong neighborhoods that keep those schools, you know, populated. So, you know, I would struggle, too, a lot like Alder Lukens. You know, overwhelmingly, 100% of the feedback I've gotten is that we have to landmark this school. So, I know that I want to continue having a good relationship with our school board. I want to assume positive intent about their efforts and what they're doing to move forward. We need, we need success in the Wausau School District. And I know that this is an emotionally laden discussion, but I know that if I were sitting in your seat, I would, I would be voting in favor of landmarking. You know, I watched all of those meetings that Historic Preservation went through. I thought your arguments were really well thought out and thoughtful. I know that we're not hamstringing the school district, we're maybe giving them a little bit of an extra, extra step here, but I think it's a good discussion for our community to have if or when that comes up again. So, anyway, I guess with that, we are ready to have a vote.
Motion passes 10 to 1.
Thank you very much, everyone. All right. We are moving on to file number 221104. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the proposal submitted by Commonwealth Development Corporation for the development of affordable housing at 700-804-810-814, 816 Grand Avenue, and a planning option agreement with Commonwealth Development Corporation. Oh. Ah, and we have Tyler here, in case we have any questions or need a refresher on this, and also Randy, it looks like he's ready to say some things. So maybe I will, we have a motion by Alder Watson, and a second by Alder Henke, but I am gonna throw the floor first over to you, Randy, and then maybe Tyler, if he needs to fill in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to be here presenting on our 700 grand RFP. We have four great proposals that came in. The committee ultimately selected Commonwealth. One of the things I wanted just to mention, there's a lot of information in your packet about the proposal. Within the planning option, working with the attorney's office, they did provide some minor clarification points from what was submitted in your packet. Nothing major in detail, just clarifying who has some approval authorities. Our whole goal with this, with the planning option, is that we're moving things forward. You're the policymakers, it's our job that once this approval is made, that we'll move it through the process, keep the development process moving smoothly, so. Happy to answer any questions. Like I said, Tyler's here from Commonwealth, if you have any questions for him, but, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Alder Martins.
Thank you. And I'm generally in favor of approving this planning option agreement. I see this as an important step in the development of the property. I do have some concerns, though, about the overall development itself. Talking with residents of the, of the Longfellow Neighborhoods Group, which this parcel would be a part of if it was, if it is completed, they are really concerned about the traffic at the intersection of Grand and Thomas Street. There's two entrances, it appears there's two entrances in and out, or of the, of the apartment building onto Grand and or Thomas, and they, they really see that as a bottleneck, especially during high-traffic times in the afternoons and early evening hours. And then the other part of the, is the concern, is, you know, the previous, the, the current occupant of this parcel, the Gaining Grounds Garden, which is, which really just serves at the will of the, of the city. The city is, is graciously allowing them to, for the past four years, to, to provide their, their services through the University of Wisconsin Extension Department at, at the Gaining Grounds Garden. And it's, it's a very well-received program. It's created a great amount of joy to many, but they also, and they, they understand, too, that, you know, this is all, you know, their, their being there is all dependent upon if there's a development plan for that parcel, so they understand that. The biggest concern is the, are the fruit trees on the property. A lot of effort went into planting those fruit trees, they do bear fruit, and any kind of agreements moving forward, I like to see would have some, a provision in there that would be moving those trees to a new location, so that they can grow and thrive. Thank you.
Absolutely, if I could answer those, those concerns. First off, starting with the, the garden and fruit trees. When we started this process of looking about developing the property, we reached out to UW Extension, and interestingly enough, that they were, at that point, already considering that they were gonna move away from the site after this year. So the timing actually worked out quite well for that. They are working with, I don't know who exactly they're working with, they're working with people to get those trees transplanted. That would happen next spring, that's the best time to transplant those trees, so that, there is a process in place for that. In regards to the traffic, that's definitely a concern with this site, we know it is, and that's why we ask with, as part of the development, for them to take that into consideration. As we start funneling down through the development process and looking at this, we are gonna consider that further. Might be potential write-in, write-out, and taking into consideration. Obviously, this parcel was used in the past for commercial purposes. We believe that the traffic generator from this site will be somewhat close to what was there in the past, but it is a concern and something we'll continue to keep our eyes on through the development process. Now, Tyler, do you have any more additional comments on the traffic?
Uh, no, Randy, I think you kind of covered the basis there, although it was definitely something that was kind of continued, that was continually reiterated, the traffic concern. So, our proposal did entail to write-in, write-out only, to kind of mitigate that, but that was kind of the main point that we took into concern there, in the best way that we thought we could mitigate that.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna call on people as they're popping up. We're gonna have a good discussion tonight. Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor.
I guess similar to what Mr. Martins commented on, via traffic is more related to parking, that was really my only concern when we first looked at these 67 spots. And looking at my complex at the old east, I believe seven of those are designated handicap right in the front of the building. So, we have a potential 60 at times that would be available for 50 residents. And I, I think the city ordinance is one and a half spots per, per unit, so that would be more like 75. Are we concerned at all that, can we tweak that, or are we concerned that that's going to be an issue on top of parking? Because if a person comes in and there's no spot to park, you can't turn around, you've got to go out grand, and now where do you go?
Orbit. Randy.
That's a great question, and something we did take into consideration with this. Obviously, with this location, there's not an opportunity for on-street parking at all. But based on what we're seeing with some of the other sites that have a low-income restriction to them, we believe that this will be a sufficient amount. We're also going to try to see if we can find some additional auxiliary parking lots that we'll perhaps call it, maybe across railroad tracks. But like I said, this isn't the point where we're really narrowing down and looking at the exact site plan or how everything lays out. This is really in the big development funnel. We're finding our developer, they've, they've given us a plan that they're looking to move forward with, and over the next year-plus, we'll really be refining that as we go through the project process, so. It is a concern, I agree with you.
Thank you. Alder Gisselman.
I just want to echo Mr. Martins' concerns about, in addition to the traffic, in addition to the automobile traffic, my concern is pedestrian, that intersection, I, whatever way you want to cross pedestrian-wise, it's not safe. And I'm sure that with the people gathering in, in this development will want to, in a certain times, either cross the street, cross Thomas Street, to go to either the park, or doing their grocery shopping down a quick trip. And, and I'm just saying that I think the city has to, when this development happens, has to, in some way, fix that intersection so that that is much more pedestrian-friendly. I, I just don't, bicycle pedestrians have, have a hard time with that intersection, and I, and I think that at one time, we were thinking about fixing that intersection, and I think that's why that land was purchased to begin with. I'm not sure if anybody, but I think that really we, and I don't have an easy answer to the pedestrians crossing there, but I think that the city has to really seriously think about that, that intersection. Pedestrians crossing from south to north, I don't see what kind of a traffic brake there is, as much as I go through there, and I think that that is something that you'll have to talk about. Also, in your letter, you said, November 8th, you made mention of the interest, in addition to the other expense, do we have a sense of what the expense for moving the infrastructure underneath that land is going to be costing the city? Or is, who's, I trust the city's going to be responsible for that?
Yeah, I mean, in one way or another, it'll end up being on the city, and I think Eric's back there, I don't know if he can provide a better explanation, maybe I'll start out, and if I miss anything, he can explain it. But there is a, there is a over 100-year-old storm sewer that comes through that portion of the property, that they're considering that potentially they'd be looking at moving otherwise, just to reroute that, it makes more sense. But $300,000 was the estimate that he had, based on the, just the, where that's at on the property and what that would all require to, to move. I'm going back to the pedestrian facilities, absolutely agree, that's something that our planning team's looking at and trying to find ways that we can improve that intersection. I think everybody can agree that there's improvements that can be made from a pedestrian standpoint at that intersection. One additional thing I want to talk about with the facility, we've been talking about trying to put a bus stop somewhere in there that'll help, you know, so limit the amount of pedestrian traffic if they need to go somewhere, that we have something that's coming to that site somehow, some way, so. A lot of considerations in it.
I guess I also want to point out that I think the DOT technically is in charge of that intersection. I know I had an interesting conversation with them earlier this year, when Eric invited them to talk about that one specifically. I agree with you, it's terrible for pedestrians.
Yeah, I guess one last point to follow through on is, you're talking about how the city acquired the land, and originally, there were, there was talks about this intersection being transformed in some other way. The reason that we're moving forward the project at this point is that that project's been pushed off by DOT over the years, and they don't have any schedule or any plans to make any significant upgrade that would involve using this parcel.
Okay, Alder Rasmussen, sorry, I skipped you earlier.
Thank you. Nope, that's fine. I think that this, first, I think we really need to let the planning option here take flight, because we can work through some of the details of the project. That said, this is an exciting project. We need affordable units, and this gets us that, and it not only gets us affordable units, but it gets quality affordable units that look like their market-rate counterparts. The building, in terms of its form and function, not only has the underground parking, but when we looked at all four proposals and we ranked them, one of the things that we liked about this particular developer is that it included an amenity for young families. It also included not only underground parking, but enough surface parking to contemplate visitors, deliveries, and some surface parking of vehicles. But it didn't have an entire parking lot. One of the alternatives had a parking lot, and all of the parking was surface parking, which was a horrific use of the site. But I think that, you know, as that planning option comes together, we, we know, regardless of what builds on the site, that the cost to move the storm sewer is going to have to be baked into those numbers, both either for grant asks or funding asks, and we know that that will likely be a mixture of reclaimed closed TID revenue, or, you know, and also we'd have tax credits that they're all going to have to apply for. So, you know, I think if we proceed forward with the planning option, that really allows them to dive into the meat of these details. You know, even on the traffic side, we talked about that in Economic Development, and talked about, you know, at least an initial pattern of vehicles entering on one end and exiting on another, so there's not bi-direct, you know, two-directional traffic at both, both access points. And, you know, that is something I think that they'll be able to work through as well. But, you know, we need as many, and this really would be an estimate, or an estimate of the units that we need here. If we can get ourselves 50 more affordable units in addition to what we're doing in Westside Battery, we really need to move forward. I mean, really, within, you know, two years, we'll start to see, as the landmark comes online and these other two projects take flight, we have the ability to add an awful lot of affordable housing that we did not have just five years ago. So, you know, I think this is a key step forward in that process, and, you know, they all are aware of the concerns that they can work through together if we let this go forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Watson.
I guess a lot of the points have been made by Alder Rasmussen that I wanted to make, but I, I really think that this project is awesome. I mean, getting more affordable units is what we need, and it is close, it's going to be close to a lot of services, because it's going to be right down there by the Community Partners area, bus lines, downtown, groceries, you know, so it's a perfect location. It's a lot we own, so we don't have to purchase something outside. And I think the renderings are amazing, and so the four projects we had were awesome. But this particular contractor, they just put together a really great package. And I don't think the building, the housing study has come out yet, Tammy, but I know we're so far behind in livable units in this town, and we are landlocked. We don't have opportunity to sort of spread out to different areas. So, if we can use parcels that are in the meat of our, of our downtown area, I think it's the best option. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you. I'll make this quick, same thing as what Alder Rasmussen and Alder Watson just said. In Economic Development, excuse me, I asked a lot of the same questions as Alder Martins asked, because I had a lot of residents, well, some residents contacted me and were very concerned about the traffic. This would be, this is in District 1, and a, a number of people really liked the little park area that's there, and hated to see that gone. And I, I myself have loved, you know, seeing the trees and, and all of that, but I too was assured that that would be, they would be moved. And I guess, you know, the same thing, the, the affordable housing, there is such a need, we keep hearing that over and over and over and over. So, you know, just for anyone who is watching or listening, I guess that was my motivation too with this. And I really also liked the parking underneath, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will tell you, after our last October meeting, I was driving home past that little area, and you know who else likes the little park? A whole herd of urban deer. So, they were out there munching on the trees and enjoying themselves, so. Okay, I think we're ready to vote, though.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. We are moving on. Item number 221105, it's a resolution from Economic Development authorizing the sale of 205 North 10th Street. I have a motion by Alder Henke and a second by Alder Watson. Any discussion here?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you. We are now moving on to file number 211204. It's another resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the first amendment to the planning option with Gorman &amp; Company LLC for the redevelopment of the former Westside Battery and LNS Printing Properties at 415 South 1st Avenue. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Rasmussen. Any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 1.
All right.
Sorry, 11, 11 to 0.
The ghostly one appears. We used to have 12 districts. Okay, we are now moving on to file number 221106. It's another resolution from Economic Development approving the waiver of the city's right of first refusal to repurchase the property and consent to the transfer of the property located at 309 McLolton Street from Jiminy Cricket LLC to Moka Inc. I have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Henke. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I had spoken to this also in the Economic Development Committee. It is my hope that we will approve this process tonight. From the get-go, with the renovation of the Wausau Club, the building that was turned over to the Hummers to create the Museum of Contemporary Art was in a terrible state when they received it. They knew it, we knew it. They did take out a rehab loan that they continue to pay for, to finish the work that the previous owner started and then, and bailed out on. But at the time, we toured that building, and it really was a stone's throw away from the wrecking ball. I mean, there were holes cut in every floor, ceiling, and wall. I mean, it just was not suitable for any legitimate purpose without substantial work. They did the work. They still have a plan to renovate the upstairs into event space, which then would remain taxable, so a portion of the property would remain on the tax roll. But, you know, I also talked about the fact that they have never been similarly situated to their counterparts at the Woodson Art Museum. Both of, while they operate first on an endowment, second, they receive room tax from two different vectors, both continuing appropriations that are allocated by the Finance Committee, they receive on an annual basis a percentage of the city's retained room tax dollars. There is no requirement attached to those dollars that they do not use them for their overhead, they absolutely can do that. The Museum of Contemporary Art does not enjoy that luxury. They have never requested room tax, but they generate room nights. And the Woodson Art Museum also comes to the Room Tax Commission almost annually for a second allocation for marketing various exhibits. So, you know, I think that when the Museum of Contemporary Art was originally proposed, there was an awful lot of, and I called it then, and I will again, jockeying for position. Continuing appropriations entities were very concerned that this new player coming into the game would cut into their allotments of said room tax, and that really has not happened. What's happened with that museum opening a second one is that that tide has really lifted all boats. And so, they have enhanced art appreciation in this community, just like every other arts organization continues to do. And so, I think that to put them on a little bit of a level playing field is fair. And, you know, realistically, you know, we also discussed in the Economic Development Committee that our former Economic Development Director, we believe, made some promises that he didn't have the authority to make, not to say that, you know, it's our job to necessarily clean up that mess, but I think in fairness to someone who in good faith has taken a building that was junk and really brought it back to new life, to a productive purpose, I, I think that there's value in that. And I think that to waive off the pilot payment and allow the tax-exempt status, at least in the museum portion of the lower, the lower portion, makes a lot of sense, so hopefully we'll all support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you. I'll just add that I was actually in conversation with residents at the Winter Farmers Market recently, and this was brought up to me, and all of the, you know, what, what the museum brings to this community, and the people that it brings to this community, and what a benefit this is. So, I did not bring up the conversation, these people did, and, and were so supportive, and so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, I, I heard the room tax allocation mentioned, was that a suggestion or that, that that opens the door for potential room tax usage down the road for this entity? Or, I mean, I didn't, what's the context for, for that?
You go, you want me to respond? Please.
Any entity that wants to apply for room tax can apply for it. Now, the continuing appropriations entities were set a number of years ago, and those are not amendable. They continue to receive a percentage of the city's retained room tax based on the amount that we collect, and those entities were identified, I want to say, something like maybe 18 or 20 years ago, Mary Ann might remember better than me, but those entities, as long as they exist, continue to enjoy those revenues. However, the Room Tax Commission takes applications twice a year. And so, if any organization that's, or event that's expected to draw roommates, room nights to the area, wants to apply, they apply. The commission makes a decision as to whether or not they wish to fund them, and those funds then are dispersed. But, you know, there's nothing precluding any of them from applying. My point is just that the Moka has never applied for room tax to this point. If they want to in the future, and they're going to bring in room nights, bring it on, because that is a win for everyone. Tourism and more tourism in this area has collateral economic impacts that we want here. So, the commission encourages everyone to apply that's eligible, and they want those requests coming in. So, thank you. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you. And yes, a brilliant former chair of the Finance Committee came up with the continuing appropriations concept. All right, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree that, you know, the arts and humanities bring a lot to humanity and to our town, and I don't think that's in debate tonight. However, this was really deliberation on fiscal matters, and Alder Rasmussen had brought up the Woodson example in committee, and I think it was explained that it's really not analogous to this situation, because there was no such agreement with the city, and that's what this matter had stemmed from, an agreement. And I believe this matter, in terms of the tax dynamic, was characterized as an error in city pages, and to my understanding, speaking with Mr. Rubo, no, there was no such error that it simply followed a typical process. And on the financial merits of, of the situation alone, I think just a few agenda items ago, the city sold a city-owned property for $2,000 that really has a value likely of $15,000. In this case, in, in committee, a pilot, you know, payment in lieu of taxes, and this situation had been brought up and then waived or dismissed in that scenario, and early on tonight, we had an item with the budget. So, you know, it's not really, when you look at selling $15,000 properties for $2,000, and you're waiving pilot agreements or potential pilot relationships, it's not really the riddle of the Spinks as to why the, the city's in fiscal trouble in the long term. So, I don't doubt the contributions that this makes to the city, this enterprise, and I appreciate and respect those contributions. But on a pure financial level, it's important that we apply things uniformly, and that we have consistent expectations and enforcement when it comes to our agreements and finances, and that is why I voted against this in committee, and we'll, we'll vote against it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think it's important to recognize also that when we heard from David Hummer in the committee meeting, he had talked about the process that he has been really stuck in the loop of for over a year and a half here. the loop of for over a year and a half here. It really has been a litany of staff processes and staff contacts where it basically brought them to the end of their rope, trying to grapple with, you know, how, first, how to get to a point where the nonprofit that operates the museum can own the building. And so, they got to a point finally where they were about ready to throw up their hands, and, you know, I think we were a short distance away from not having a Museum of Contemporary Art anymore, quite frankly, based on the anxiety that this whole situation has created. Now, that pilot payment was estimated after the reduction to be about $6,000. And so, if anybody thinks that in a $123 million budget, that $6,000 is going to make or break this city, and yet we would then sacrifice not only the existence of the museum but the room nights that it generates, we would be cutting off our nose to spite our face based on a process matter. So, I think we need to just apply some measure of common sense here and recognize the value that the museum brings to the community, recognize that the upstairs portion, when it's developed for event space, will continue to yield tax payments. But we have a number of buildings in our city that are split, where a portion of the building is taxable and a portion isn't, and we have the processes for that. And even in trying to make this decision, I had discussed that principle with Rick Rubo, and he was in agreement that that certainly can happen. So, you know, I guess, I think that, you know, we can argue that a contract's a contract, but at the end of the day, pushing for that, you know, that idea, I think, is going to cost us in the long run. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, you know, I think there's no arguing here. It's nothing personal. And for the sake of institutional memory, $6,000 was brought up a year, and I'll just say that it was just a few years ago that the city and some facets of City Hall fought the community and a good portion of the Thomas Street neighborhood to not test Riverside Park because those testing costs were just over $30,000 at the time, which would be about five years of the so-called trivial amount. So, it's really the sum of the parts and the composite of all the giveaways from the city, and I'm not characterizing this as a giveaway, but I am saying that, you know, undercutting ourselves financially over and over and over again, year after year, the sum of those parts do add up to something profound. So, I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you. I just want to be very clear and transparent after hearing all of this discussion tonight and having sat through Economic Development, and Tammy and I talked about this since then. My concern was that we drafted a resolution that in some way granted some kind of tax-exemption status to this particular entity, which I don't want to get involved in because that's not a decision the Council makes, that's a decision the independent assessor makes. And so, I tried to sort out in the memo that I provided the actions that needed to be taken and the rights that the city could exercise, and that first one was our right of first refusal to either repurchase the property or waive it so that Mr. Hummer could sell, or Jiminy Cricket LLC could sell the entity to Moca Inc. And to do that, the option he provided is included in the packet so that you know what you're looking at to exercise that option. But I didn't know at the time of writing the memo whether the financing commitment was satisfied by Mr. Hummer's lender or not. And I guess you would, in all fairness and transparency, I need to tell you that if you're seriously going to consider repurchasing it or waiving that right to repurchase, we need to know whether the financing commitment was met or not. Secondly, we need to decide whether we're going to consent to the transfer of the property because that's another right that we've maintained in the restrictive covenants. What I did not include, though, because it was, talked about at ED that we would, I think Alder Rasmussen's motion was to waive off the imposition of a pilot payment when, in fact, staff was recommending that we have one, but we didn't need to recommend that because it's already there. It's a restrictive covenant that runs with the land. As I described in my memo, that was the consideration for having given them the property, was that if you transfer it, you can't transfer it to a non-taxable entity, or you can, but you will consider, you will continue to make tax payments for 20 years. So, this resolution, I want to be very clear, would have to be amended if you want to amend the construction loan agreement and the currently recorded land restriction. It's not a contract, it's a restrictive covenant that runs with the land, that whether or not it's, and the entity is tax-exempt or not, that that restriction will run with the land through August 31 of 2037, so for another 15 years. It's only run for five. Now, he's paid taxes, or Jiminy Cricket's paid taxes for the last three years. I don't know where the $6,000 came from, but the taxes have been roughly in the neighborhood of $15,000 a year, and that's a partial assessment. So, when the event space is finished or any other improvements are made, the assessor will reserve the right to change or modify that assessment, and I'm assuming that it's only going to go up every year and isn't going to decrease, but I don't know that because that's a decision the independent assessor makes. I just want to be really clear that this does not address amending the restrictive covenants in any way, and that if we want to do that, this, and you want it to be a separate motion, we can do that and then create a resolution after the fact, but this resolution does not include any sort of amendment to that recorded memorandum to eliminate that restrictive covenant that requires whatever entity owns that property for the next 15 years is going to pay taxes, whether they are a tax-exempt entity or not. So, I just want to be clear that that's the way it was set up originally, and so, to say now, well, we're not going to impose a pilot payment, it's already sort of there. So, if you don't want to do that, you will need to make a motion to amend this, to include in the be it resolved paragraph that we amend whatever documents contain that restrictive covenant because that's recorded as we sit here. That's what it says. So, I didn't say that very artfully, but I think I've covered all of our rights.
Sure.
Point of inquiry or a question, if I may, Madam Chair? So, in committee, there had been an effort to waive or remove the pilot. Am I understanding correctly then that whatever covenant or agreement had been in place will continue, and that would not occur then? Is that correct?
Well, the covenant is still there. It was there before it came to committee. So, it wasn't a matter of imposing it or saying, well, no, we don't want to impose it. I want you to be aware that it was there before we discussed it at ED. So, if you want to change those restrictive covenants and you want to say that whoever owns it for the next 15 years, whether or not they're a tax-exempt entity, depending on whether the assessor determines any portion of it is tax-exempt or not, then they won't have to pay taxes, then you'd need to make an amendment to that effect to this resolution, and we'll have to change the memorandum and re-record it to change the restrictive covenant that's going to run for another 15 years. I want everybody to understand that.
Do you have a question, Alder Rasmussen?
Yes, and I'll make the appropriate amendment. So, where we're at, that is new information because what happened in Economic Development is we were presented with materials in the committee that indicated that it was the staff's recommendation that we impose a pilot payment in lieu of taxes.
That's correct.
And so, that was a miscommunication that happened in the committee. Now, that said, we were clear on what our goal was, and our goal was to allow the museum portion of the property to become tax-exempt and allow for the sale. So, if that needs to happen through an amendment, both to the land restriction and the past agreement, I will make an amendment to this motion that includes in the be it resolved that the appropriate staff are directed to create the appropriate amendments to exempt the facility, the nonprofit portion, the museum portion of the facility, from the requirement for a pilot payment. That really should get us where we need to go, right? So.
Okay, I don't want to confuse those two issues, though. So, we're, that's not going to make them tax-exempt. That action's not going to give them tax exemption. You understand that's a completely separate process?
Pilot payment does.
All you're doing is waiving a tax payment.
We're waiving the pilot payment. The $6,000 figure came from the directive from the staff and Tammy's write-up that we try to recover the city's portion of the taxes only, which is a percentage, not accounting for the other tax-collecting entities. So, that said, if the imposition of the pilot payment, that's already a caveat of the contract, needs to be waived off through amendments, then my amendment here is to direct staff to create the appropriate document amendments to make that happen. And so, if the assessor decides in the future that half the building is still taxable, that's completely up to him under the law. But our goal was clear in the committee, and so if we need an amendment to achieve that, I'll make that amendment.
All right.
All right, so you're just waiving the, any tax payment in the future from here on out?
Correct.
Without the assumption that that gets us where we need to go or gets them anything other than off the hook for paying taxes?
For the pilot payment.
Right.
So, correct.
All right, so we have an amendment, a motion. Is there a second?
Can you press your amend button?
Oh, technology.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we're talking, it looks like we have a second, by Alder Watson. So, at this point, kind of a new discussion. If there's any questions or comments that folks would like to, Alder Denny?
Sure. So, does this satisfy what, I mean, I was inclined to support this based on Mr. Hummer's commentary at the committee last week or two weeks ago. Does this satisfy what they asked for and what the city is able to do here?
I'm not sure what they're asking for, but that's what I want to be clear about, is that by waiving off this restriction and forgiving the taxes does not grant them any kind of tax-exemption status. We can't conflate those two issues.
That's correct, but waiving off a pilot payment is a payment in lieu of tax. So, we're waiving a payment, we're not waiving taxes. A payment in lieu of tax is not tax, and it's not tax-exempt. It's a payment you take from an entity that ordinarily would be not subject to tax.
Well, the actual agreement, as I quoted in here, says that the borrower can transfer the property, provided that the obligation of whoever the owner of the property is will continue to make real estate tax payments through August 31, 2037, whether or not the entity or any other third party as a successor to the property is an entity or body normally exempt from paying real estate taxes.
Right, so all along, you've had them paying taxes.
Right.
And so, the staff recommendation was that in lieu of that, when this goes nonprofit, that we would impose a pilot payment. There was no mention of prior deed restrictions. It was that.
I know, I understand that.
So, and I guess, you know, subsequent research reveals whatever it reveals, but our goal in the committee was to not impose a pilot payment, and that was originally assumed to be a staff recommendation for new action. If there is a requirement that a pilot payment exists in the caveats of the contract, we want to waive off the pilot payment. That's not tax exemption. A pilot payment is not property tax. So, we're not creating, by nature of waiving off a pilot payment, we are not creating a tax exemption. I mean, it's a payment in lieu of tax for a reason, it's not tax. So, we're waiving off a payment that would be made by a nonprofit or private sector entity, that, and we are entitled to decide whether or not people pay that payment because it's a mutually agreed-on payment. It's not a property tax bill, it's a payment that we and they said will pay, much like the water utility pays a pilot payment. Developments pay that, so.
You can eliminate the restriction. I'm just not, I don't want to misstate the answer to Alder Denny's question, that it, by waiving off that restriction, it gets them where they want to go. I don't know where they're trying to go, and I don't want to say that by waiving off that restriction, we are in any way saying that this is, they're exempt from the payment of a pilot or real estate taxes or whatever you want to call it, because that's not a Council decision, that's an assessor decision.
Based on the dialogue in the committee, their goal was to stop paying property tax, which they've been subject to for a number of years. So, selling it to their nonprofit entity was their way to get there. That's between them and.
The assessor.
The assessor and the law.
Yep.
But subsequent from that, we were told, oh, to make the city whole, you really all should charge them a pilot payment. Well, we didn't want to charge them a pilot payment. We want a level playing field because the arts community is not in the business of paying us to, you know, bolster our revenue stream. So, we are requesting that that pilot payment be waived off, and that's an agreed-upon payment, it's not property tax. So, by us voting for the amendment here to direct staff to create the revisions to the agreements and the deed necessary to remove any sort of pilot payment, I believe we can do that and let the tax-exempt status matter work itself out between the Assessment Department and the museum. So, that's all we're doing here.
Can I throw in my two cents?
Yes, please.
Um, if I'm understanding exactly what you guys want to do, and please, correct me, would it be the easiest thing, we're waiving the right for us to purchase it? We're waiving that right. Now, you want us to physically remove the restrictive covenants. That will take care of them saying if they can be taxed or not taxed. If we just remove that restrictive covenant, would that not solve what we're trying to do, and then the taxes themselves, that's all between, we have to cancel the restrictive covenants?
I guess I'm not following. We're not trying to do anything for them or affect anything for them. The goal was to.
We're waiving the first right.
Was to amend the restrictions to not require the payment of real estate tax payments for 20 years. That's what we're going to remove from the restrictive covenants under her amendment. Right?
Can we see now why the museum people are at the end of their rope?
Exactly.
This is what they've been dealing with for three years, so.
Well, I dealt with them at the beginning, and I wasn't asked before ED when this came up, so I was trying to help Tammy after I sat through ED, and I'm like, that's already in there, it's a restrictive covenant. So, everything you say, Lisa, is true, it's just that's not precisely what the documentation says. So, I wanted to be very careful that we're not getting involved in making a.
We're not interested in creating tax-exempt status, we're interested in not collecting a pilot payment from them, and if that means we remove the deed restrictions, one of which says we'll never sell to a nonprofit entity, well, that's going to happen, so that's out the window, and.
Point of order.
So, we need to figure out how we're going to get where we're trying to get. So, I guess I don't care who speaks next, but we need to figure it out, and the committee was clear in what it was trying to do, so.
Can I ask Mr. Hummer if his financing contingency was met or not met? So, we can at least get past whether we want, where there's any interest in repurchasing the property?
Right, so, right now, the President, Todd Nagel of Incredible Bank, and Todd Nicholas are sitting down with their lead commercial lender, Rob Wyman, and that was, this morning, I got an email that they're reviewing to see exactly how they want to put together the package. So, nothing is approved, but I don't see any, there's no indication that it'll be stalled in any way or, you know, that we're not going to get the loan.
Okay, and you understand I'm not trying to be difficult, but I have to advise them of their right to repurchase it. I don't know that there's any serious interest in repurchasing it, but.
And if I may say something about this technicality, I do understand that what you're doing in waiving a pilot payment has no bearing on my relationship or Moca's relationship with the tax assessor's judgment every year to whether or not the museum is exempt from property tax. So, I'm understanding that what Lisa is saying is this pilot has been created, and she's suggesting it be removed, which has nothing to do with property tax. And I understand that, and I think.
I understand her amendment. I understand her amendment.
I think everybody understands now, so.
Well, and the other part of the, the other part of our right to repurchase it is that we have to close it when you had in your offer it needed to close, which is this Friday. So, if we don't yet know whether the financing contingency is met.
And so, the, yeah, so the title company, Realtor, all that is on hold, waiting for Todd, the two Tods and Rob Wyman from Incredible Bank to put together that what they feel a comfortable closing date would be. You know, and what, is next week Thanksgiving?
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, we're trying to get there, but it's, you know, it'll either happen shortly just before Thanksgiving or just after, is what I'm assuming.
So, understand that you're waiving your right to repurchase it without knowing whether or not that commitment was satisfied because they're supposed to provide a written loan commitment to the. loan commitment to the city or the lender's rejection letter of the financing before we make that decision. But we're not going to have that at tonight's meeting, and I just want you to be aware of that. That might be fine if there's no serious interest in, in repurchasing it. But I need to advise you legally, that was what was to be provided for us to make that decision, and then we needed to decide that now because the offer says it has to close by Friday. And now we're, that's going to be pushed off.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Certainly.
There's nothing about a pilot in this resolution. Can we just assume that it doesn't exist at this point?
That's what I said in my memo, and that's why Lisa made the amendment.
So like, no amendment is necessary? Like, we don't even have to talk about that right now?
Oh, yeah. No, what do you mean?
A pilot? The pilot doesn't exist in this resolution. We're not creating it.
It, it already exists.
The pilot.
We're not creating it. It exists. It's already a land restriction, which Lisa's now moved to amend, to remove, to add three things to this resolution.
Trying to make this easier. It's not. Um, can I, I'm going to move on. Alder McElhaney.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ann again. I, I guess, would you read...
Thank you, Mr. Hummer.
Would you read that restriction? Because I'm very confused as to, to what the restriction...
The construction loan agreement said, and the memorandum that was recorded as a restriction that runs with the land, references the construction loan agreement, so I got my hands on that. And it says, "The borrower may, now, or any owner, may transfer the property to an entity at any time, provided that the obligation of the owner of the property to continue making real estate tax payments shall apply through the termination date, August 31st of 2037, whether or not the entity or other third party as successor to the property is an entity or body normally exempt from paying real estate taxes. This restriction shall run with the land for a period of 20 years and be memorialized in a recorded memorandum." And that's what was recorded.
Okay.
So if we want to add that to this resolution, which Lisa's now made, moved as an amendment, you would move to waive your right to repurchase it, consent to the transfer to Moca Inc., and re-record the memorandum to eliminate that deed restriction. Or transfer restriction, I guess I'd call it.
I guess, I, I hear you, but I, I don't understand the amendment, because if we have that, that they have to pay taxes, tax-exempt or not, up until 2037, or whomever buys it, right? Um, but how is saying they don't have to do a pilot changing that? I'm, I'm really, I'm just really confused, because either... So they still could, so that part of the, the deed restriction would still be active?
Sorry, I'm off. She's moving to remove that deed restriction, under the presumption, then, that if it's transferred to an entity that is normally exempt from paying taxes, they wouldn't have to pay real estate taxes.
So then, okay, so then if that's removed, that just means that it is a normal taxable thing, if it's a normal taxable item? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Denny, was your question answered with this exchange?
I'll, I'll consider that answered, yes. But it, I do have a follow-on question if it, if it comes to me one more time.
It will eventually. Uh, Alder Watson.
Okay. So I was looking at the memo that Tammy mentioned. The pilot payment was just something you suggested. It's not part of the MOU. It's not part of the, the thing. So in amending it to say we aren't doing the pilot payment, that's not even a part of this thing. It's, it's because she's not saying to remove the real estate taxes. That's not what it says. No, she said pilot payment.
Okay. There, some, I need translation. Mary Ann's telling me that you can't see the restriction, so I... The packet I had was about this thick of legal documents, and I, I'm actually on vacation, and so the packet wasn't in Lisa Persha's hands.
So I guess my question is, can we take up that particular part later or at ED?
Whatever the council wants to do, absolutely.
These two things.
Sure.
I mean, just have it clarified.
You can separate them or, or go with Lisa's amendment in a second and add it to the end of this particular resolution. It's all germane. I just wanted to be clear, because it got, you know, there's the construction loan agreement, there's a commercial note, there's a mortgage, there's the memorandum of understanding that was recorded, you know, we had the offer to purchase, I had the closing statement. I mean, I, I pulled out all the documentation. So it was discussed at ED, so that's why I wanted to make sure that I brought it up. But I wanted to point out to everybody that we, I did not include that in here because it wasn't discussed that fully or put forth that way at ED. So I wanted to be clear that when I drafted the resolution, I didn't include an amendment to the memorandum. Because it was put forth, we should, if it, they become tax-exempt, we should propose or we recommend a pilot when in fact it was already there. And so I didn't want the council to be confused by that. It's not that you're deciding not to impose it. It's already there. So if you want to take a, take it away, then we will remove the restriction and re-record the memorandum. Does that make sense?
Okay. Uh, we have some more comments. Alder Denny.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, as it's written, I, I have no issue with waiving right of first refusal. I don't think this, I haven't heard an argument for the city to buy this back. So I, right now, we're at the point of the amendment. If we vote down the amendment, we can vote for this and take up the other piece later. Does that affect the current transfer schedule?
Did we get a second on Lisa's amendment? Okay. Then I think if there's no more discussion on her amendment, we should probably take a vote on that.
There's still some more discussion.
Okay. Then after that, we would take a vote on that amendment, and if the resolution's amended accordingly, then yes, all three of those items would be taken up. If, if there is no serious discussion about trying to repurchase it, we probably should vote on that tonight, even though Mr. Hummer's indicated that it's going to close later than Friday.
Alder Gisselman.
I think that we've moved beyond the agendas, the way the, um, I think it's much, it's really becoming a larger issue than the agendas on the city council. So I'm, uh, on the, on the published agenda, which is, which is just the conveyance. And I think that I, and I don't know if it's appropriate when considering an amendment to table and send it back to ED. I'm not sure how that works. But I think this needs to be finalized into a finer package so that, one, the citizens know exactly what we're doing, and also the city council knows exactly what the wording is that what we're doing. And I think we're doing any amendments or so on the fly this evening, and I'm not sure we completely understand what the implications of these are. But I'm not sure about the parliamentary procedure about moving the, because there is an amendment on the table.
If you may, I, I think if you didn't feel comfortable with this, you could vote it down, and you could still pass the resolution as, as presented. But you could also say, hey, we expect to see this at whichever committee, yes, whichever committee, so we can hash all of these finer details out in a committee setting. So I think that's probably a possibility. But it is all on you guys. You get to decide. Is there anybody else that has a question or... Okay. So right now, you are voting on the amendment to this resolution, and I, the resolution and the amendment, oh, it's up there.
To direct staff to create appropriate documentation to remove the transfer deed restriction covenants for 20 years. Does that capture your amendment? Okay.
Okay. All right. So we're voting on the amendment, and then we'll get to the main event.
You may begin voting. Motion fails five to six.
All right. So here we are, back at our resolution as presented. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this? Alder Gisselman.
Yes. At this point in time, I will make a motion that we send this back to ED. And what I ask the parliamentarian, is it appropriate in conjunction with, um, Mr., with regard to the appropriate time? For instance, we have a city council meeting one week from tonight. Uh, is it possible that ED can meet between now and then and, and finalize the final resolution to come before this city council?
I'll let the chair of ED decide that. I mean, that's up to the members of the ED committee. But yes, you can make a motion to refer it back to ED.
I guess, do we really need to rehash the original motion? Or are we just going to discuss the potential amendment and having another motion? So I mean, we've already had a pretty full discussion about these two items.
But I don't think you can, I'm sorry.
Feel free. Yeah. We're, we're in uncharted territory.
I don't think you can bring back another motion that's not agendized. You just have the one motion that's in front of you, agendized, and how can you present something else as another motion? I don't think you can do that.
Do you, do you mind if I kind of take a stab at this? So you can...
Well, what he says is true, that it does, the agendized item is to consent to the, or either waive the rights of first refusal, repurchase it, and consent to the transfer. So my suggestion was going to be the same as yours. There, if they voted against the amendment, they might have done so because they felt it wasn't germane and it wasn't appropriately considered because it wasn't agendized. But I wanted to be clear with everybody about exactly what was happening, particularly for those who even hadn't been at the ED meeting, so...
I guess my thought is this. It feels like a new issue that we'd like to talk at ED, but this one, you probably still feel that you've hashed out. But we have some folks here who still would like to speak. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Is it possible, I mean, first, before ED meets and talks about it, we need the documents that we're going to be asked to act upon, created by the staff. If our legal reviewer is on vacation, we, there is no way that that's going to get done before the 22nd. If any of this is going to hold up Mr. Hummer's closing, that's a problem.
No, it will get done. I have all the documents upstairs on my desk right now. I mean, it will, you, you'll get them all. I could have everybody have them tomorrow. It was just, there were like 10 items on the ED agenda that night, and that was, it created a lot of work in terms of digging out lots of documents and assisting with resolution writing and so forth to get everything out with the election for the clerk's office and get everything out, and then the comings and goings, trying to dig up all that legal documentation. We didn't get it all in the packet, and for that, I apologize. But I do have it, and you can have it tomorrow.
So I guess I, I also am remiss. We did have a motion from Alder Gisselman to refer back to committee, but I, we don't have a second, so we're kind of talking out of turn, all of us. Now we have a second by Alder Killian. Okay. So right now, we are now discussing the motion to refer back to committee. Uh, I have Alder Watson here.
Is that point of order? Is there really discussion on that?
I have somebody in the docket.
To refer back to committee, though, that ends discussion.
No, it doesn't. Alder Watson.
Okay. So I, I really hope that we don't refer this back to ED. I think we can act very, very intelligently on these two items that are agendized, that the citizens and we're made aware of. I think discussing the, the latter part of what the memo Attorney Jacobson gave us, we can discuss that in ED at the beginning of next month and bring you guys back something after we flush that out. But I think we can act on this. It's all there. We haven't changed it. It's not amended. So I think I would implore you all just to vote on the original thing and not refer it back. So thanks.
Okay. Anyone else want to talk about this?
And it is debatable. A motion to refer back to committee is debatable.
Yes. Okay. I'm not seeing anybody who would like to speak anymore on this. Now, you are voting on the motion to refer this back to committee.
And let's be clear, are we referring back everything or just...
That, that's the impression I got from Alder Gisselman, but if he has clarification...
Referring the actual resolution before us that, for the consent to the transfer and to waive the right to purchase it. You want that referred back?
Right.
All of it. Okay. All right. That is what you're voting on, referring this back to committee that you have. Okay. All right. Uh, I think we can vote on the refer back right now.
You may begin voting. Motion fails three to eight.
Okay. So now here we are again with the resolution as it was presented. Is there anyone who would like to make any more comments on this? Otherwise, I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes nine to two.
All right. Thank you. All right. We are now on to file number 190514. This is another resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the first amendment to the development agreement for Mountain Lane Apartments with 1401 Elm Street LLC and Roland Lockery. Looks like I have a motion from Alder Watson and a second by Alder Herbst. Is there any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All righty. Next up, it's file number 190514, a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving the sale of Mountain Lane Apartments from 1401 Elm Street and Roland Lockery to Mountain Lane Property LLC and assignment and assumption of development agreement by Mountain Lane Property LLC. It looks like I have a motion from Alder Watson and a second by Alder Herbst. Any discussion?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All righty. We're now on to file number 221108. It's a joint resolution from the Economic Development Committee and the Finance Committee approving the sale of 110 South 84th Avenue in the Business Campus to Wassa Coated Enterprises 2 LLC. I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen and a second by Alder Lukens. Is there any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All righty. Next up, it's file number 211109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the modification of the 2022 budget for the EMS Flex Grant Award. We have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Watson. Any discussion on accepting free money? No.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right. Your item is over. File number 211109A. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving and adopting the budget for the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund-funded projects. This is for Corrosion Control Optimization Study. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Herbst. Any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right. File number 211109B. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving and adopting the budget for American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund-funded projects, this time for LED Service Line Replacement Plan Consulting Services. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Lukens. Is there any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All righty. Uh, on to file number 211109C. Another resolution from the Finance Committee approving and adopting the budget for American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund-funded projects, this time for PFAS Treatment Process Design. We have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Watson. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question about this. So is this for a forthcoming design, then? This has not occurred yet.
I will let our utility director answer that question.
Yeah, this is for the granular activated carbon system to be in place and hopefully bid in 2023.
Okay. So it will be competitive procurement, then?
Yeah, it'll be required to be.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, excellent, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up, uh, file number 211109D, that's another resolution from the Finance Committee approving and adopting the budget for American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund funded projects, uh, for 2023 sewer main projects related to the 2023 street reconstruction of 10th Avenue, Grant Street, and Henry Etta Street. We have a motion by Alder Martins, and a second by Alder Lukens. Any discussion?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All righty. Uh, all right, we are now on, just making sure, yep, okay. We are on file number 211109E, Finance, uh, it's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving and adopting the budget for the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal, Fiscal Recovery Fund funded projects, 2023 water main projects related to the 2023 street reconstruction of 10th Avenue, Grant Street, and Henry Etta Street. It's water, not sewer. We have a motion by Alder Watson, and a second by Alder Lukens. Any discussion?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right. Now, we're up to file number 211109F. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving and adopting the budget for the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund funded projects, this time for the sewer lift station upgrade design. Uh, we have a motion by Alder Herbst, and a second by Alder Watson. Any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. We are on file number 211109, no letter, but it is a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the reclassification of projects funded by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, SLFRF program to the revenue loss classification. I have a motion by Alder Watson, and a second by Alder Denny. Is there any discussion?
You, you may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All righty, uh, we are now into file number 221109G. This was an amended, um, amendment to our agenda, uh, but it is a resolution from the Finance Committee establishing the 2023 property tax equivalent for Wassa Water Works, uh, Wassa, Wisconsin. I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen, and a second by Alder Herbst. Is there any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. We are now at the point where I'm asking you to suspend the rules. 12A, referral of resolutions, this does require a two-thirds vote majority. I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen, and a second by Alder Watson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All righty, uh, we are on file number 850214. This is an ordinance amending section 12.32.040, insurance required. I don't know if anybody wants to give a spiel on this before we get going, but we do have a motion by Alder Rasmussen, um, and maybe a second, uh, by Alder Herbst. Alder Killian.
I was just going to ask if there could be kind of a spiel or summary here. Thank you.
Yes, I don't know who wants to take this.
I usually review, as a member of the Board of Public Works, the, um, insurance certificates that come in for the Portland cement and the, um, bituminous concrete, uh, license applications. And it's come to my attention recently, because we see all different kinds of endorsements that come with those certificates of insurance, and they don't, the endorsements, some of them don't match the certificate language, and so on and so forth, but they'll give you various, we, I think our ordinance originally said a 10-day notice of cancellation, and I've been told now several times by some big insurers that that's just too onerous, and it's not standard in the insurance industry. And so, we want to be respectful of that, and understand what we're asking of people, and we ask them to provide that. So, what, what is typical is that you get, and perhaps Lisa Rasmussen can back me up on this, but 10 days advance notice is typical for non-payment, but 30 days, uh, cancel, or notice of cancellation of someone's policy would be typical for any other reason other than non-payment. And so, that's what I'm proposing, just taking care of our ordinance with, then. And that's why I just asked that they suspend the rules, that we not have to take this through committee. So, it's basically just a change from the 10 days to the 10 days and 30 days for different reasons, because that's what's typical in the insurance industry, I'm told.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. So, you're right, 10 days is standard for non-pay. It varies by carrier, but are you talking about cancellation initiated by the company on the 30 days? Because the only cancellation circumstance where you would not have, um, that level of notice is if the contractor that you're getting the certificate for voluntarily cancels or removes their coverage. There's no such thing as advanced notice. They make a decision, and then, of course, that action takes place. So, if it's a carrier cancellation, um, of coverage, where they intend to either not renew it, or cut it off midstream, that's where you could get the 30 days.
The 30 days, right.
Okay.
Yep, that makes sense to me. Thank you for explaining that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, I don't see anyone else who would like to speak, so, let's do this.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right, uh, we are at the point where, uh, if there's anybody from the public who'd like, who'd like to comment, uh, now's your time. Thank you for sticking us out. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Alder Killian, and a second by Alder Hanky. Oh, just kidding, they push buttons. All those in favor can signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned. Have a good night.